All right, six fifteen, we get the work session started. Pete asked me last week, we could have do this over a street maintenance plan. I'll leave it for you something he put together. So with that, Pete?
Yes, I've I've discussed this before, but we're to the point now where we're we're down to the wire on being able to utilize our our machines and our equipment to do the work we we tried to do back in June and July. But I have a I've got a question I want to ask of the commission. Question is, why did we rebuild Crawford from ten to twelve? And Endrick Street from fifth to sixth? Why did we remove the asphalt and reengineer Cooper Street? And why are we in the process of removing the asphalt and rebuilding the two blocks on Horton Street? Anyone know the answer?
Is it a is it a trick answer?
No.
For the betterment of the community?
Okay, that's one answer.
Okay.
I'll give you the answer. It's because those streets were non-reparable. It's our obligation to repair and maintain streets that are repairable. When those streets are no longer repairable, then it's our responsibility to somehow or another rebuild those streets. I want to, in my understanding, that Fort Scott has seventy-two miles of streets. And maybe sixty percent of those streets are brick streets. And our brick streets were designed for pre-motorized vehicles under twenty thousand pounds. We have currently sixty thousand pounds and up of vehicles running on our on our streets. And those loads started in about nineteen seventy. Up until nineteen seventy, we didn't have the myriad of problems with our streets that we have today. Our streets have been broken down and destroyed by those loads. And that's because our our streets have little or no foundation. And without a foundation, those streets have to be classified as non-reparable. Otherwise, we can't fix them from the top up down. We have to go down and fix them from the bottom up. And and a complete rebuild is the only means of fixing these streets. And a rebuild costs around two hundred thousand dollars per block. And on on national, the complete rebuild cost us a million dollars a block on the seven blocks that we did some years ago. It's my opinion that we have nearly six hundred blocks of non-reparable streets in the city of Fort Scott. And the cost to rebuild those based on two hundred thousand a block would be a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty million dollars. With a budget of two million dollars per year, that timeframe is sixty to seventy years. Much like our our public or our utilities director gave us numbers before that it would it would take nearly seventy years to replace and rebuild our sewer lines. So the question is, and it becomes, what do we do with these non-reparable streets while we're waiting? While we're waiting for this hundred and twenty or this sixty to seventy years? And the 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 technical answer is, what do we do while we're waiting? The technical answer is, we shift from the street rebuild schedule to a more proactive maintenance program by performing low to moderate cost, high impact maintenance activities, which will increase the pavement condition index. We call that the PCI. I call it patch and repair what we have and make them smoother. And using our pothole patcher, we can improve a hundred blocks of streets per year. That's my estimate based on what I've done in the past. Our street rebuild program over the past two years netted three blocks. That was two blocks on Crawford and one block on Endrick Street. And this year, hopefully, we will net another three blocks. Well, three blocks a year gets us nowhere. And so we've got a lot of streets that we have to work on. We have to do things on those streets to make them drivable. And and so so the the next question then is, do we spend more money to improve the hundred blocks? Or do we spend it working on a few blocks of rebuilding each year? And that's a choice that we, as the commission, have to make. My estimated cost to patch and repair, and I ran this by the Tom Hampton with Total Patcher. He agreed, the estimated cost to patch and repair the streets per block is about two thousand dollars a block. So each year that we that we patch and repair, the hundred blocks, we're talking two hundred thousand dollars. And that is a that's a reasonable price. We can we can do that as a city. We can't do two hundred thousand dollars a block and get anywhere because we just simply don't. That's just never going to get us there. So what we're going to do with the non-reparable streets, I don't know. I don't know at this point. You know, they're just what we have to do or what my intention is. And I described this in the in the handout that I gave you. This is my roadmap to improving our street PCI from a three point five to a five. A five is about as good as we can do with the funds that we have to do it with. Now, a five means we can drive down a street without potholes, without huge bumps that we fall into, without ruts that the trucks have left in the in the pavement. It's something that we can ride a motorcycle down and and not the fear of running into a pothole. A five is a is a is a usable street. It's the average from a zero to a ten. And the ten being a brand new street. So our attempt in the past has been, and and it was my understanding too, that when I came on board, that we would be rebuilding these streets. Never in my wildest dreams did I imagine that we would come up with what we got. By investigation, I I went out and I checked our the bases under the brick. And where I found in two or three places that I checked, we've got about an inch of sand. And so those are all, I'm not saying that every street in town is that way, but the ones I've seen are. So the the roadmap that I'm I'm giving you is my vision of a program, a street maintenance plan, to to get there, to get to the five. Now, not to get to the ten. I want to get to the five, and we're looking at approximately seven years to do that. And we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars per year. But I don't think we have any other choice. We we cannot ignore the condition of our streets anymore any longer. Those streets are are getting worse, and they're getting worse every year. And they're every year that we leave these potholes, we leave these low spots. That's a place for water to run down and stay in our in our base. And then when the water gets in that clay that we've got underneath there, then we just we just widen the area. So what I'm what I'm saying is that that we need to, first of all, there's no ordinance preventing us from using our pothole patch machine on our brick streets. But we have to define what streets we're going to put under this maintenance plan. And what I'm proposing is that we that we that we take all the brick streets in the historical district and classify those as repairable brick streets because they are part of the historical district. What that means is that we will plan to replace the the bricks. We'll do what's necessary to to upgrade those those brick streets outside of this maintenance plan. And so anything else, I would I would add to that some certain areas like I'm saying here, Fifth Street over by the old Congregational Church and also Third Street over by Eugene Ware. And I say mention those because they are in pretty good shape as we as we sit here. And and those buildings are also part of the historical buildings in the city of Fort Scott. They're listed on the National Register. So I would I would propose that we that we any any brick street that is in remarkable condition, that we don't even consider them as being a replaceable or a part of the maintenance plan. We we figure on use leaving those as much as we can.
That's what that's what I always said, if we went down a street, just for example, if in a whole, you know, and if and it had four or five bad spots in a two-block area, repair the spots.
Yeah.
Don't even think about.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I'm and this this is a matter of judgment that that we we all have to agree on. Right now, we 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 don't have a clear-cut policy of what we're going to patch or what we're not going to patch. We don't, you know, the the city has been dealing with this same situation for fifty years, and it's never changed. And so if we if we sat here, if this commission describes our our plan and describes our classifications of the streets, and we say, we're going to classify these as as a non-replaceable, repairable street, then we can proceed with our with our patch and repairs, and we make those streets so that we can drive on them. And again, we're not fixing anything, we're just bringing them up to where we can drive on them and make them a little bit better. We get them up to a five, and it's not going, not saying that they're going to stay there forever. But that's that's how we're going to try to work it. If I put in here a typical base under the existing brick streets as I see it, a picture that I have that I took on tenth and Crawford, and it shows about five inches of of total cross-section. That's the brick and the sand below it. Right below that is a typical cross-section of a modern engineering engineered roadway. And I took this right off the Cooper Street plan where it calls for six inches of compacted earth, eight inches of AB three base rock, and ten inches of hot mix asphalt. So that's a total cross-section thickness of twenty-four inches. So we're trying to run trucks over a a five-inch total cross-section when modern engineering would put a twenty-four-inch cross-section in there. So that's what I'm that's what I'm saying. The if if we can shift our 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 procedures, if we can shift our priorities from for a while anyhow, if we can shift our priorities from a total reconstruction to a this is a more productive maintenance program, is what I'm asking for. And also policy so that so that Jesse knows, okay, we can work on these streets, we can work on these streets. And this is what we can do. I talked to Jesse the other day, and there was some confusion about whether or not we could use this pothole patching machine on the brick streets. And again, there is no ordinance that says that says we cannot. And so what I'm proposing is that we we patch all the low spots, we do the missing spots. We've already got concrete in them, we've already got asphalt in them. And we're not really going to change the looks, the appearance or anything, we're just going to make them smoother. And we can do that with the machine that we've got.
So you're proposing that we actually use the machine on the brick streets also?
Absolutely, absolutely, on the non-reparable brick streets.
On the non-repairable.
No, yeah, I'm not I'm not preparing, you know, proposing we do anything on the repairable brick street. That'll be a different program.
So if it's just blew up and we're planning on taking it out someday anyway, we can go ahead and at least make it smooth.
We can make it smoother and and get it to where people can drive on it, you know, this year or next year, instead of having to wait sixty years.
And I'm I'm not trying to interrupt your deal, but
Please do.
Also, something we need to keep in mind, and Mark, catch you up to speed, I don't know if you probably paid attention anyway, but at one point in time, right before this COVID stuff hit, we had been working with Bobby Reed and Sheriff Bill Martin to get on the work release program as far as the inmates helping out with the brick streets. And they got a really cool program that they use, and they call it like five to one or something like that. You have to have a a security person, and they can provide the security people, but the they said their guys like, you know, they get out and mow and do all kinds of things anyway. And this is something that they'd be interested in working with us on to where we could have them start helping us, if nothing else, clean and palletize bricks in the brickyard, and then, you know, teach them also how to repair brick streets. It's a pretty labor intensive, so this is something they could help us out with, especially now that there are people coming in and out of the jail.
Okay, I'm not proposing that to be part of the maintenance plan.
No.
And and we're, you know, and but I agree, when we get into the rebuild program that we're going to have downtown, rebuilding the like Third Street out here, the Second Street right here. Yes, that's a that's that's a good point, and yeah, but that's another plan. And so examples of of the maintenance activities that I'm talking about is includes pothole repair, sections of non-reparable asphalt and bricks replaced with asphalt, skin patching, alligator cracking repairs, crack filling, chip sealing, and broken concrete repairs. Those those can all be smoothed over and made drivable with the emulsion rock mixture that this machine puts out. The machine is a very good machine. I have run, like I say, I've run this over with with Tom Hampton, and he agrees that 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 the machine will do what I'm I'm proposing it to do. His only question is, where do we start? So that's, this is the start. We have to start by making policy. We have to say, yes, we are going to, we are going to use that machine, we're going to use this mixture on these streets. We're going to make these streets at least drivable so that so that the people can have some pride on in driving down the streets. Like I say, we simply don't have the the have the funds to rebuild our streets, and that's going to have to come from outside the resources of the city of Fort Scott. And I think we are working on that also. But what what I would like for us to do is to mull this over. And I'm looking at the what what we would have to do. We right now have a two hundred and fifty gallon tank that we use. And if we get this program moving like like it should move, we would use about two hundred and fifty gallons a day. We would not, we would not go over on the east side and patch a hole and then come back on the west side and patch a hole and, you know, hop, skip, and jump. What we would do is take a whole project. We would do like if we were going to do Little Street, we would go from Elm Street to Sixth Street or wherever where we would do the whole street in in one swath. And I feel that that this is is a a method that we can get our people driving on our streets. The also, we would also have to take a ordinance number twelve twelve oh ninety, which is our excavation ordinance. We would make some changes in that, in the fact that that ordinance calls for a like-to-like materials. Otherwise, if you take bricks out, you put bricks back in. Well, I feel that's no longer applicable to these streets that we're talking about. So I would I would say we change that that ordinance to anything in the unrepairable classification, those bricks be replaced with hot mixed asphalt. If hot mixed asphalt is not available, then we use coal mix and then replace it when hot mixed asphalt does come in. But there's there's simply no reason for us to to spend our time and money replacing those bricks because it costs four times as much, and you know, Chad told you that. And so if we if we just change that portion of it.
Pete, as a as a guy that repairs streets also for a lot of times for the gas company, if it was a brick street, a lot, you know, you know yourself, hot mixed asphalt is not readily available through the winter. It's not, it it's far off from here at times, you know, whether it be Pittsburgh or Iowa. Would it be possible if it was, would it would it be good with you if we replaced that with concrete? And if it was an unrepairable street with a broom finish or even go back to where we say you could, because they sell several brick stamps, if we had a if we had a stamp, we could put colored concrete in there.
I wouldn't waste my time on a stamp. That's again, these are streets we are going to tear up at some point in time, whether it's this year or twenty years from now or ten years.
Well, again, I just, I mean, I just wondered.
But I agree with what you're saying, and usually the specifications are that if you can put hot mix in, put hot mix in if you can't, you put coal mix and then replace it in the sprint when you do get it. And we can work on that, we can. I would I would not be adverse to put concrete in, but I would, if we had a choice, if we can put hot mix, that's what we need to put in. Because it's a whole lot easier to work with when you do tear down. But any any of the change in that ordinance, we would we would leave the ordinance in effect for any streets that's classified as repairable brick street. So they would be required to replace those with bricks. Total yearly material uses usage is approximately fourteen thousand gallons of asphalt emulsion. That asphalt emulsion today is costing us two dollars and fifty cents a gallon if we pick it up in in Kansas City. Unfortunately, like I say, we only have a two hundred and fifty gallon tank. So when we get the program in full swing, we'll use that in one day, so it's not practical. So what I'm saying is that we need to purchase a fourteen thousand gallons or an eight thousand, seven or eight thousand gallon emulsion tank, which we can get from the same company that produces the the patcher. And that's a heated tank with augers in it that that rotate, that moves the material around and keeps it from settling. It's 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 the perfect tank that we need. With that, then we can call Kansas City and say, send us
Semi-load.
Yeah, a tank load. So we're getting it a lot cheaper. And I'm I'm sure that we can we can knock fifty cents a gallon off of it, which is, you know, would help pay for the tank, as well as having the tank here available for us when we, every day, if we refill the machine. We've got a good source of of the half-inch chips. We have a huge pile of chips down at Highway thirty-nine down there. I don't remember the name of the quarry down there, but but anyhow, the
Nelson?
Yeah, I believe it is Nelson. And we've got a real bargain price down there of eight dollars a ton. We have to go get it ourselves, but that's what we have to do. And I think the quoted price to produce it here at these quarries was about sixteen dollars a ton. And so right now, we've got we've got we've got the materials available that we need to use. If we, in fact, want to speed this operation up, we may want to look at a second machine. And with the second machine, we could we could have a hopper right on the machine that holds eight tons, and so that's about a day's work. See, that's how it's this machine is built, is for a day's work of production. And so the two fifty gallon, eight is is about what you need for eight tons of of materials. And so we're looking at, we're looking at spending some money for equipment. And that's where I get into taking the money that 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 we were going to spend on on rebuild and get this maintenance materials and equipment, personnel up and running so that we can we can go through this. We're looking at seven years with one machine. We've cut that in half with two machines. And and there's nothing saying that we won't have to start over again when we when we complete the hundred, the the mileage that we have. So that's what we would have to do is 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 put a crew, dedicate a crew for doing this project, and that crew would be on that machine every day that weather allows. There'll be certain days that we can't use the machine because of weather. The the material is very susceptible to rainfall. And so we have to really watch when we're putting material down. But the crew could also start in the spring, early in the spring, that's the time for crack filling. We're remiss in crack filling in the city of Fort Scott. We've paid thirty-five thousand dollars or twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, I think it came down to. I think they lowered the price because they didn't do as much.
It was bid at thirty.
Yeah, yeah. So anyhow, we spent that money for crack filling on national. And we we have got to put together this this crack filling process as well as a chip sealing crew. Chip sealing is is a maintenance project, and we've got areas like Country Club Hills that we relayed asphalt five or six years ago. Never been touched since, no crack filling, and that that is ready for chip seal. Chip seal will extend the life of the asphalt.
Huge.
Double. So chip seal should be done every four or five years. Crack filling should be done every year. And so we've got even the area from from on Horton Street, the area that that runs from the top of the hill to out past the Country Club. That's a chip seal project that should be done right away. So that's all included in what I'm talking about, but is a dear, is separate from the the maintenance program that I'm talking about here. But those are those are items that we should be doing today that will preserve what we've got and and make our our streets safer and a whole lot better. I did give some examples, pictures of of what I'm talking about, areas that that we can that will be built up level and and make the make make the potholes go away and make the you know, on on the first page of pictures, I've got show a picture of a of a excavation that was made.
Have you priced this yet?
No, I haven't. I and 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 see, that's very hard to do because their price goes up every day. And that's all steel, and so
Well, the reason I say this, this is a great machine, and like you said, it's heated, right?
Yes.
Okay, that would be the only thing that would throw me off because I was thinking we have a tank company here now, it wouldn't have agitators in it.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be above.
This is a special tank.
Right, right.
For emulsions.
That's what, like my sealer tank that's got batters in there that turns everything, it's just not heated.
Not heated, and and there's a particular way that this this material likes to be rotated.
Sure.
And it doesn't want to splash. You splash it, you 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 break down the molecules of the asphalt.
Right.
It's a real complicated thing. It's a real complicated thing. And, but all of these, all of these pictures depict areas, there's one that just shows on the brick street, there's a, there's a big puddle of water. We can replace that water with this machine. And so we won't have that hole. And we won't have that water going down and destroying the base. Some other pictures are, are pictures of, of the machine in action. Alligator cracking, crack filling and, and some, some repair broken concrete. Jesse and I looked at the intersection of Main and Twelfth Street. And we've got every bit of what we're looking here right there in that, in that one intersection. We've got cracked, broken concrete in the crosswalks. We've got water holes and we don't have any alligator cracking because it's brick street. But, but this, this would really improve what we're doing here in Fort Scott. Give us something that we can realistically do. We can afford to do this. We can't afford to do that.
Where does this put, I know you're a big part of the street advisory committee. Where does this put them? The work they've done so far?
The work they've done so far is, is not without merit. It's not without cause. We are doing, I believe this year, what we, what they suggested and, and but we have to step back and take a look at reality. You know, we, we just have to get, we have to start working hard on, on making these streets drivable to get them up to the
One of the things that, I know we worked so hard on that and that was the plan talked about going is getting the street advisory committee and picking out streets. I, I mean, I know you don't want to just scrap that.
No, I'm not proposing we scrap that. I'm proposing we, that we do, do what we can. You know, we got so much money and that's what I'm trying to show here. This is a two hundred thousand dollar project that we're going to take out of that money. And when we get, get figures together on, on the chip seal that we want to do, those, those will add to this. And so, so, but this is the main priority is, is to get these streets into a, into a five.
Have we ever done a PCI index on all the streets?
I, I did a, a sort of one. I, I rode around. I did a, a, a study on the east side and the west side. I didn't drive every street. But generally what I, what I ranked, how I ranked it, and I had other people go out and, and look and rank those as well. I found it's, it's generally between a three and a four, with some going all the way down to a two. And, and of course we had some up to a five or six, but in general, we're talking about a PCI of three point five.
Pete, and what's, what's PCI stand for?
Payment Control Index, is that right?
Payment Condition Index.
Yeah, and you're saying just rating them on a one to ten?
Yeah, usually, usually it's one to a hundred. Generally, yeah, I see, but basically, I mean, if you're going to have a plan, you need to have that go through, basically you want to go through your whole town. And these are the roads between eighty and a hundred. These are the ones that, you know, just need patched. Zero to ten might say that's a total rebuild or whatever. Basically this gives you a list.
That's cool.
And so, but basically it's, it's an eye test. I mean, there's companies that do it basically. How many potholes within a block, alligator cracks, right? There's just so many things you look at.
So, so let me ask you this. And this, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking and you're exactly right. I, I mean, I'm liking this plan because this is something that's more affordable that we can attack. And that was a couple of years back, they had that company. Do you remember when we had that big thing up at what's the, oh, Empress? We was up at the Empress. And the group came in and said, you have a beautiful town, everything's quaint, you need to touch up on your signage. We didn't know this was here and that was there, but your streets are the most horrible streets we've ever seen in this, in the state.
Yeah, and I, I mentioned that in here, the bumpy streets.
And then she went back and said that she loved the brick streets though. Don't touch the brick streets.
Well, she's talking about downtown and I'm, and I'm with her.
Right.
But those outside of the historical history, we just can't afford to do.
So, so with, with limited help right now, is that something that you're proposing that, that Jesse do or is that something we can help him with?
No, no, Jesse would have to do this. This was, this is Jesse's project. We instruct him to do it. We've got Brad here, or we did.
He's right behind you.
And I did talk to Brad yesterday, I guess it was. And he's, he's fully confident that we will get our manpower built up.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. If, if we're going to get a plan, if we're actually going to do a plan, we need to get a plan and stick with it. But we need to have a couple of options. If we can't find the manpower, what do we do? That's where I'm at. If we can't find a manpower, we need to have a backup plan.
Well, I, I think we, I think we need to, to start with a plan and you know, our backup plan is to do what we're doing, which is basically not much. And, but, but we're still spending the money, but we don't have the plan in, in, in hand to let Jesse say, okay, this, this week we're going to work on Crawford Street, Justin Street, whatever. And because he doesn't have any authority to do that, because we don't, we don't have a, a, a plan that we can work on those brick streets. That's always been the, the holdup is because we don't want to go out and, and do something against the ordinance or something that is going to create an uproar. We need to, we need to put this thing into, into a, some, an ordinance or a resolution.
When you say Jesse doesn't have authority, you meant to repair brick streets with the pothole?
Right, uh huh. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That's, this is, this is something that
Jesse, have you been running the pothole patch? I know you've been here a couple of weeks. Something you've been running?
Uh, yeah, we had it out today. Days of permitting, we try to get it running every day, other than days when we got to go pick up more material or other things come up or we're short handed.
My biggest thing is I haven't seen it done on a whole block. I'd like to see it done on a whole block before I would commit to anything to make sure.
Exactly, I would too.
Do we have a block that we could?
Do we have one that we can do?
Yeah.
Sure we do, but I
Now, now Josh, when you're talking about a whole block, you mean from curb to curb?
I think that's what Pete was saying, alligator cracks. I mean, you're talking about doing
Yeah, we've, we've got a sample over on Horton Street, right off Sixth Street where we started with our training crew. There's a sample right there of what, of what we can do with our, our, our alligator cracks and our potholes. A very good sample. And we, we put down a, an area of what I call a chip seal. About what, ten feet by twenty feet or so, all that we could do with the machine as we had it working. And we put down an area there about two months ago that's, that's been highly traveled and a lot of the rain on it and it's standing up very well.
Josh, are you asking to actually do a whole defined block? Is that what you're?
I mean, if, if that's, if that's the, the route the commission wants to go, I mean, I don't know. Jesse knows more than I do. Obviously Tom says that's been done. To me, that just looks like a, I'd like to see it on a whole block and see what the outcome is.
Well, yeah, that's why I put the pictures in here to show you that, that, that other people are doing it. Here it is, here it is. Those are the pictures. No, we haven't done all of these in Fort Scott, but we've been primarily working on potholes and
I know we've talked about the street next to the high school.
Uh, yeah, we just passed potholes today.
Did you work over there on that street?
Yes.
On, by the high school?
Yeah, we just passed.
Was there, was there quite a few potholes over there?
Uh, yeah, um, I can't remember his name, but I'll hand the maintenance guy or the head guy for the high school.
Yeah.
No, it's, uh
Daniel Kappa.
That's it. Uh, yeah, there were some spots where when they plow, their blade catches, so you can't see. We, we leveled those off areas for them to try to make it smoother for their snow plowing and stuff like that.
Have we been over to Horton Street to see how well those potholes held up from when we did it?
Yeah, I, I don't know. It depends on how long, like you said, it's a ten by twenty foot section that's
Yeah, I think they did some potholes after that, didn't they Pete? Down a couple of blocks.
Yeah, I think, I think all those potholes they did stood up and, and again, they were operating with a machine that
Yeah, and I was pleased with Horton Street. Now, there were some potholes that I don't think will last that they did. And so I just want to make sure that was maybe not proper usage and not necessarily the machine, so.
Well, I, and again, this is a learning process. You, you don't become a, a electrician on the first day and you don't become a pothole patcher on the first day. And we have changed personnel on that machine, have we not?
Uh, yeah, a couple of times. Uh, there's a few guys that were with the training, but not all of them.
Yeah, and so, yes, it, it, there is a, there is a learning process. And, and, and as these guys do it, they'll get better and they'll get faster and they'll, you know, for them to, to learn and understand what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Pete, if we're, if we're talking about using the patch machine to do whole blocks. Again, I mean, I guess my question is, it'd be like trying to use my sealing machine to do whole blocks. I wouldn't want to seal whole blocks with a handheld machine, right?
Well, no, we're not, we're not going to, we're going to, we're going to do select locations in that block. No, we're not going to cover all those bricks in that block. No, that's not
Well, I know we're not going to cover all
All we're, all we're going to do is, is do these areas like, like we show here. We're going to do those areas and smooth those out and make that dry.
So you're not saying, even on an asphalt street, we're not going to do a whole block curb to curb?
No, 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 absolutely. On the asphalt street, the, the seal, the chip seal is done with the machine.
That's what I was just telling Mark. I said, we, it would be best for us if we look into a chip seal machine.
County has one.
Right.
County has a good one, I believe.
So that may be an option also for some of our
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here looking at
Here, here's the biggest thing is we can talk about using these machines, but what roads, like what road would we use a chip seal machine on?
Well, I, I just told you, you know, Country Club Hills, we're, we're doing it on I know Circle Drive was done ten years ago and never been touched. That, that's, could be a chip seal. The area from the top of the hill on Horton to the city limits, out past the hospital, that needs to be chip sealed.
And you'd really, I mean, you'd really take chip seal up through Country Club?
Absolutely.
Okay, I didn't know whether that would be better for just sealer. I mean, is it pass just sealer and it needs chips?
You need the chips on it. You need, you need a chip seal.
Okay.
A sealer just wears off. The idea is
Don't tell my customers that.
Pete, can I, can I, can I jump in just a minute?
Sure, sure.
Because you guys know the construction and chip seal versus, I don't know, whatever, anything else. You know, I'm not that guy. But, but I, I'm, first off, thank you. I, I'm excited that you're thinking about a way to stay within our budgetary guidelines and move us forward. And what sounds to me like what you're saying is let's make a plan, let's follow through the plan and we'll know week after week, year after year, where it is we're headed. And I, I think that's critical to moving forward and getting all this done. But I've got a series of questions, just so as I think about this, I can get the concept in my mind. I don't, again, I don't know what kind of rock the pound and what hole. So when you're talking about, you're not talking about completely giving up the program on non-repairable streets. What you're saying is let's do the rest of this and then prioritize those streets to go forward. That there are some that are just going to have to be repaired no matter what we want.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, and then if, if I'm thinking, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're maybe also saying, let's get the street committee involved or the, that to say, this is our priorities through the years or so that there would be a selection process that Jesse would know. And he'd say, kind of, kind of like you're doing with the non-repairable streets, you'd say, Jesse, here's, here's your vision. This, here's what you're supposed to accomplish this year. Go to it. I, I love that, that, that we're looking forward, thinking and assignment and get out of the way. Has the engineer reviewed all this?
I've talked to the engineers about it and they're non-committal. Of course, their effort is to, you know, repair and replace, or replace, because that's the proper way to do it. But if you don't have the money to do it, then it's, it's not a factor.
Could, which, but we will
I forget, did, did the guy, Tom, is that his name?
Tom.
Did he give a estimated time line, life expectancy on doing this?
We're, we're looking at three to five years of, of, of making a patch and expecting it to last. And again, a lot of that depends on the, on the equipment that we, that we run over.
Well, and, and again, a lot of it depends on if we're preparing the base correctly. You know, uh, you know, some of the times I've seen, and, and I'm not knocking anybody, but I've seen them blowing water out of the hole and putting it right back on top of it.
Yeah.
And you can't, that's not going to adhere.
It's got to be dry and it's got to be clean and that's all part of the, the training and
And again, those are techniques. So, so the engineer question is, so can we have a global review from them? As well as it sounds like we would ask their opinion about, Jesse would know as you get more knowledgeable about which streets are going to require chip seal and which ones are going to require chuck hole repair? And, and so, so we would engage them as we went along in that way? Is that what I'm understanding?
That wouldn't be necessary because it's, it's pretty obvious, you know, what we can and what we can't. And we, yes, we can, we can engage them all you want to. I, I do have the, you know, the, the manufacturer of the machine. He's been in this business for twenty five years. He's, works all over the, the area. He's, he's working with the state of Iowa right now, training crews. They have these machines all over and this, this is what he says we need. You know, he, he backs that machine with, with, with these, you know, these
I understand. I just think that if we got the engineer on staff, it'd be nice to have them approve our plan each year.
I wouldn't have anything against that and I, and I would, I would, I would like that.
Again, I'm just trying to get my mind to what we're talking about because I think it's a great idea to move forward. Okay, a couple more. So I got, I got several things here. I'll try to go through quickly. So when we start talking about brick streets, it, it makes me think that we're probably going to get some input from the HPA and from the citizens and those kind of people about where, what, when and how. I, I just, and I have no opinion about that other than I suspect we will want to hear that. The hiring process, you guys mentioned that. It sounds like Brad's confident we can, but how many people are we going to hire? Have we looked into the numbers of that, how that impacts the budget?
Well, with this program, I'm looking at four people.
And, and is that included in the two hundred thousand dollar amount?
Yeah.
And is that, does that add anymore? What's, do you, do you know Jesse what our full-time staff numbers are supposed to be? And does four require any new budget or is that within the realms of what you have?
No, I mean, four is basically what we have, but that's barring nothing happens. I mean, like
Do you, do you know how many you are scheduled for? I mean, how many, you have four now?
Yeah, we
How many openings do you have?
Two on the streets and one on stormwater. But I mean, it's like I said, if a building falls down and we have to go close a street, that takes away a day of doing things. Or there's a downtown cleanup event and we have to go sweep streets and close streets down for that or good old days. I mean, that's, in a perfect world, they'd be able to do it every day.
So I guess my question is, how many people do you need?
To do what he says?
No, to do everything besides what he says.
Uh, I mean, you need four guys for that and then four more.
We need eight people, using what he, if we go with what he suggested, you need eight people on your crew.
Uh, yeah, probably, no, we probably need ten for streets to do, to where if you want four guys only doing that, you're going to need ten guys because there's going to be other events come up where we need
Would you have four now?
Yeah, I mean, we have
So we could get by with eight, but you said eight to ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's what we've had in the past years has been
Yeah, you go back, you go back twenty years ago and we had thirteen people and we had workers that were, I mean, they were dedicated. We had an asphalt plant. We had things going on. And so it's possible. I mean, the town hasn't, you know, shrank that much that we don't have the same tax base. It's just we're doing things in a different manner. We need to get back to where we, we have a good, strong street crew.
And I just wonder how much of it went from not being able to hire. Maybe that's why we went away from it also.
What do you mean by that? You mean people just not wanting to work?
Right.
Well, I mean, part of it's salaries. We're not really that competitive in our salary compared to private businesses also. So, so I mean, we're, we're getting guys, unexperienced guys, and when they get experience, they're able to go somewhere else with their, their experience for higher wages.
So maybe you can get with Brad and we're putting a plan to you with this, you can say, this is what I need, how many people I need. And this is why I think we need to pay them to actually have a crew that's going to stay with this and not leave in two months, three months.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's our biggest hurdle right now.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think that's a, a plus that we, that we are all new. And, and Brad, you know, comes to us with a, a, a vast amount of experience. And that he can work with Jesse and, you know, they can work together to, to, to say, this is what I need. This is what I need. This is, this is how we make it. But like Brad says, we don't hire the position, we hire the person. We hire the person and make him a gypsy or make him a truck driver. And, uh, so I think I'm encouraged by that.
So Pete, uh, still on a global thing, that what, as I understand, and you've obviously done lots and lots of work on this. What you're projecting is that we would do this within our current budgetary projections.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, and that's why I'm saying we may have to, we may have to take some of that, uh, that, uh, funding. For, uh, uh, street improvements or the replacement and put it into some equipment here up front. And we may have to take some of that money and, and, and build on this, this, uh, program.
Well, the other thing I would suggest is if we have any extra money laying around that, uh, these non-reparable streets, if we have them identified. If there are federal dollars that come down, we've got, if they happen to have, need matching funds or something that we have some sort of reserve that we can do that so we can move forward.
Jesse, could you, based off this plan, can you just put a list of what your concerns or what your obstacles might be? To put this plan in, not today, just think about it and just what your obstacles might be to put this.
Yeah, like you said, uh, if, putting on the cost of the tank, that's gonna be, I'm assuming that's gonna be a pretty big upfront cost. Be big.
Well, there's things like that you put in, if, you know, we go through and say, hey, we need to scale it down till next year or whatever.
Well, Josh, and we can also, uh, what, what, how many gallon tank were you talking about?
Seven, eight thousand gallons.
And what's a tanker bringing in?
Uh, maximum of ten, but you, you know, we would get a tanker price.
Right.
At seven thousand gallons, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I was just trying to, trying to picture that. I mean, that tank I have is a thousand gallon and that's pretty small for a, for an operation, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's doable. I mean, that's.
It'd be a two-month supply, basically, seven weeks upon.
Yeah, if we divide seven thousand by two hundred and fifty.
It's about thirty.
Yeah, about a month.
I think, I think it's a great plan. I mean, I think it's, it gets back to reality, you know? And I loved your plan in the beginning of this whole deal, and that would be, in a perfect world, when we had job trailers set up and we had. We're working here, we're gonna start at one end of the town and work our way across. But, um, we've seen the hurdles and we're at a different time, I feel like, in society in general. It's where it is hard to come up with help and it's hard to come up with, with, uh, experienced help. Even in my little, uh, time, it went from the phone ringing all the time, people begging to, to have something to do. They were good, experienced people, and now I'm doing the begging. And, uh, it's not near as fun. So this gets us back at it, this, this type of work and stuff we can do.
Right, exactly.
You know, we're not gonna be getting on any pavers, you know, laying down. We're gonna have to hire professionals to do that and then we can do this.
This is what a, uh, a maintenance crew should do.
Right, right.
This is, this is what the machine is built for. And, uh, this is what the emulsions are built for.
And we'll still get to some of these holes that the emulsions and everything's still not gonna be, uh, what we need to do. If it's a big nasty area, we could still cut, patch, repair.
Yeah, I, and I addressed that in here, that part of this is repair of, a replacement of non-reparable.
Right.
Items with onyx asphalt.
Yeah, cuz I.
And that might mean, at some point in time, we may have to take, uh, take the asphalt laydown machine out there, just like over there on Horton Street. Uh, where we went and laid that with the laydown machine, just like out at the lake. Uh, where we laid that with the laydown machine. Uh, I'm not, you know, that's all part of this.
Right.
Uh, uh, but it, it would be, uh, it would be a different situation where we did that, but.
And I, I just got one more question. I'm assuming on the bricks, you can square it off and not just go to the pothole, make it look halfway nice?
Well, we can, but it's not necessary.
You, 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 we should though.
I think we should.
Yeah, because if you're, uh, let's just say you have a beautiful Victorian home or whatever and we just go out there and slop some stuff and they'll go, well, it don't matter that much. Because we're gonna come back and redo it someday anyway. They're gonna be mad.
I, I, and I, I hear you. Anything we do, no matter what we do, there's gonna be people that are gonna say no. There're gonna be people that say, no, we can't do that, or why should we do that? Why should we not put our money, uh, in, uh. Uh, in, in total rebuild. And again, I'm saying, what I'm saying to all those people, I'm saying to you, is that we don't have sixty years to wait.
Right, right, but I'm just saying also, I want you, you know, Jesse, to know that when we do this, a lot of it's gonna come with common sense too. Because if there's, if there's bricks that are falling in and it's a big m- mucked up area. And you decide, hey, we could take these bricks out, get back to where the course is good. We can come in there with the tamper, pack this in and put cold patch or hot patch in it. Then that may be the way to address some of these bigger holes.
And again, I talked to Jesse about that. We, uh, go out before the crew, uh, goes out. And we mark the, the patches. We mark, physically mark the patches on, on the street. If we wanna square it up, we put it square.
Yellow paint.
But this lets, this lets the crew then go to work and they, they don't have to think about what they're gonna do. Uh, they know because Jesse's already been out there and, and.
Got that block prepared.
Yeah.
Let me understand this on two, two levels then from what you're saying, but, uh, one is actually none of this is a. I, I, I realize that there are things that happen day by day that have to be taken care of, but the streets you're talking about now are streets that can be identified. The entire program can be laid out in advance, so they know what they're doing. This is not like we're gonna go out on Tuesday, pick out a road to do on Wednesday. So, so that should be.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
And, and then the other thing I guess I, I wanna know about is as we identify the. Non-sustainable or whatever you're calling the streets that just have to be completely redone.
Repairable.
Yeah, okay, th- those are repairable ones.
Non-repairable.
Non-repairable. Um, a- as we identify those and prioritize them, th- this is not gonna create a lot of duplication of process. Where we do this process and then a year later go and tear it all out and do the street.
Oh, no.
That's why I think that PCI comes into place, because if you have an eighty, you know, that won't need to be totally redone for ten years. But if you have a thirty, you don't wanna go.
Yeah, that goes to Kevin's question, which is the person that's got that horrible street in front of them, we can put a patch in it. We're not gonna do that really.
And that's why I think that PCI index is so important for us, so we're not just picking Joe Blow street. We actually have a plan based off data, so.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, and that's the other thing, we gotta, we really gotta get good at this stuff too. I've got, obviously, people that message me throughout the meeting. And somebody said, you gotta watch that we don't turn a hole into a bump, because that can happen very quick with that machine if you use too much.
Again, that's all in technique, that's all in training.
Right.
That's why we're, you know, we're not gonna be professionals when we start. Uh, and they're not professionals today. I saw some patches they made the other day that I don't like. Uh, but again, I have to realize that these guys are just starting and, uh, uh, they're gonna get better. That's, that's the thing. That's the key.
Yeah, the other report that just came in was said there was more than thirty people at the beach tonight and everybody was having a good time.
What's that got to do with patching?
I'm just saying, we done something right and I'm the one that did.
There you go. I, I, and I'm proud of.
All right, is there any other questions on this or?
Well, what I'd like to do is, again, uh, have a, uh, have a decision made, you know. Uh, by Tuesday, next Tuesday, we have a meeting, right? And I'd like to have direction for that meeting. I'd like to do whatever we need to do.
What direction are you looking for?
Uh, I'm looking for a, 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 uh, a, uh. Acceptance of this program.
Well, I mean.
Or.
I have, I have a question. So like, your proposal, or you're not proposing to completely do away with getting redoing streets, correct?
No, no, no.
Thing like, I, I don't think, if we're gonna redo Horton still in the future, I don't think we should go over it. And spend money on doing your, part of your two hundred thousand, uh, of our budget of pothole patching Horton, and then we're gonna tear it up next year and redo.
I, I agree. I agree, but here again.
Yes.
Yeah, tha- and that's, uh, a- and that's just common sense. That's what we're talking about. But we could go to, uh, the two-block area outside of what we're gonna do on Horton and we could go from there to the top of the hill.
Again, if, if the two-block area comes, so next year we're gonna do six to eight. Uh, and then in two years, again, I mean, if it's gonna last three to five years, we're not gonna go from eighth to tenth, correct?
Uh, that's a decision that, that, that basically you and.
To me, that would be, that's, you're spending money twice.
Yeah, we, we wanna make it so that people don't, don't drive on it for more than a year. Uh, if, if it's, if it's, if it's within the year, then yes, we, we don't do it unless we have potholes. And we would fix the potholes. Uh, but if we have, uh, the alligator cracking and all that. Then no, we'd let that go for another year, uh, figuring that we're gonna tear it up and rebuild it. But then again, that's where we have to get into this whole entire planning process.
So Pete, if you're asking for next week to, to okay the concept, I think that's probably doable. But otherwise, there's a lot of devils in this detail. We, we still need to know the cost though, we need to know the hiring practices, we still need to know.
I gave you the cost. The, the cost is here.
Okay, I, I still wanna see how that fits with the budgetary things and I, I'm, I'm. I saw what you did, but I think we should be double checking and going back through and.
We can sit here all winter and do that, Randy, if you want to, but, uh, we're running out of, uh, daylight. Uh, we've only got a couple of months left, uh, uh, in the season, so a week means a lot to us. And, uh, so if we, you know, I know this is a, uh, this is a good plan. You all know it's a good plan. It is a plan. We don't have a plan. Uh, let's put it together and let's get it going. We can always change it if we, if we don't think it's. You know, there's nothing that we're gonna do here. It's cast in stone. It's all handwritten. And, uh, so it's, it's a situation where we need to move, we need to get into action. Uh, I would like to see another, uh, twenty or thirty blocks.
What I'd like to see by Tuesday, if you can or whenever, is your questions on the plan. This is what I need to, um. Make this plan happen. Like right now, if, if next Tuesday we make a meeting and say you need to start doing this for guys, where does that leave us on? Um, with the other guy. That's my biggest thing, Pete, with four people. I, I guess I don't know what you're actually looking for next.
I would like, I would like this, whether we start the program next week or it is, is, but we, we can at least get, get it down. And we can say, this, yes, this is, this is how we wanna do this.
I think what.
Go a hundred percent with this plan, uh, you know, maybe you've got a better idea.
I don't.
Maybe there are some better ideas, uh, but we can, we can change this. We can make those into better ideas, but, uh.
Yeah, I don't think you're necessarily saying by Tuesday, we wanna vote to buy, uh, you know, a hundred thousand dollar hopper and things like that. You're just saying, let's, let's think about adopting this plan. That way Brad and Jesse can start getting a plan together as far as coming up with the crew.
Sure.
And getting people going on this thing.
I'm, I'm asking for the plan.
My second question, is this something we have to adopt or just give direction to Jesse?
We just give direction?
I don't know. That's, that's something that, that Mark should know that. What's the answer to that question?
I mean, I, I'm assuming if we gave direction to you, Mark, saying we want to focus, you know, seventy percent, eighty percent or whatever on doing these streets. That's something you don't need a.
Well, number one, does it fall into the budget? And I don't know the answer back here tonight.
Uh, it's what I'm, what I'm talking about doing is not adding to the budget. What I'm talking about is perhaps taking some of the funds from the budget and fund this.
Right, well, that was number one. Number two is, uh, if there is an ordinance, uh, this twelve, twelve, zero, nine, zero. Then you may need to address that on the bridge streets in the areas where you're gonna change the patching priorities.
Well, that has to do with excavation. It has nothing to do with this. Uh, this, this, or, this, uh, that, that. That is an excavation ordinance. So that means that if, if the, uh, uh, water department goes out and digs a hole. And fixes a water line, then they have to patch it back a certain way. And what we're doing, what we're saying is that, that, you know, we, we have to compact it. We have to use the AB three materials. But when we get to the top of it, in these unrepairable streets, instead of putting in bricks back in and concrete back in. We put asphalt.
And to me, that should be, that's probably one of the top questions that we need to answer about changing that ordinance. Have we done any brick? We haven't done any, or have we went against ordinance and done any brick streets that you love? Where is that at?
The city of Fort Scott has went against ordinance on.
No, I meant the pothole patcher.
Hmm, not yet. Not since.
Not with the pothole patcher.
I'm curious to just to see what it looks like.
Yeah, that's me too, but, uh, not since I've been here as far as I know, prior to me being here.
Not, that I haven't seen.
No, we, we've never used it on the bricks and that's why, uh, that's why.
Test and tune? You're thinking test and tune on the bricks?
Absolutely, a- absolutely. I, I, but I, but I'm confident that, that it will work on the bricks. It works on concrete, it works on bricks, it works on dirt, it works on, you know, whatever you've got. Uh, it's.
Well, I'm just saying, and when you ask, uh, have we went against ordinance and, and the reason I was so vocal in saying yes was because. Uh, as a contractor, I was always held to accountability. Brick goes back, brick, concrete, concrete and asphalt, asphalt. But, uh, the city of Fort Scott could do whatever they wanted to and I could take you to place after place where there's concrete, big concrete patches and brick streets. And we go against ordinance all the time.
That was against ordinance.
Absolutely.
This is what I'm saying on the non-repairable streets. Instead of going against ordinance, we change the ordinance.
I agree.
To, to make it so that we can patch it, because there's no spend, no sense in spending all that money.
My problem is this, the one thing I can see that, that the problem with that, are you gonna let the, let, allow the contractors to do that too then?
Yes, yes, on, on the non-repairable streets.
Now, if this one lasts.
That's why we have to classify these streets as repairable and non-repairable.
And this, uh, only lasts two to three years. How hard is it to, I don't know, to pull up the, the dip in bricks and put down new bricks? Uh, how hard is that? If you're just lasting two to three years?
Uh, here, here's the thing, uh, on bricks, I, like, like Pete said, I don't mind, you know, putting some pucky in there to get by for a little bit. But again, I, I personally think that we need to hammer down in talking to the, the sheriff's department. And getting the, the people out there and working, because I think we can get a lot done. I think we can get a ton done on those brick streets.
Do you have any idea timeframe, let's say a five-by-five, where you go down there and fix that, to last two to three years?
Well, it's gonna last a long time.
But he's wanting us done Tuesday. Well, I mean, who's gonna determine between now and Tuesday what's a non-repairable street? Well, I think he's just saying, put a plan.
No, he's just saying to adopt the plan to get you started.
But, uh, I mean, if we go out there and we start overlaying on brick and somebody says the street's repairable, who's that gonna fall back on?
Yeah, that's another question.
How do we determine what's repairable, what's not?
I think that's a great point, Jesse, we're a little bit carved for the horse.
Comes in, but. So Kevin, if you had the option of replacing bricks or doing this, what would you pick, not lasting two to three years or whatever?
Um, well, I, like, like, again, I, I'd take six and one half dozen, but other, because you could come through there and if you can shoot that stuff on there to get us through. Till the brick team gets there. And then we get, we get our blocks that are saying, uh, they're, they're an eighty percent or however you're rating these things. They're seven or eight and we're gonna, and we're gonna fix that street. That's the ones we send the brick crew in. And then we send the ones that are a twenty percent and put the, the pucky on till the brick guys can get there. Because it may be two or three years before they're gonna get to the street down here, so we'll shoot that stuff on it.
And we do that because it's quicker to do or?
Absolutely. Well, it's way quicker.
Definitely quicker. It takes ten minutes.
I'm, I'm thinking, uh, let me just give you an example, Josh. Let's say the, um, uh, down behind hometown, what is that, North Judson? There is some huge divots down there. I mean, huge, like you could lose a truck in. But we are not, that's not the historical district. We're not, you know, as, but, but it would be nice if they didn't drag the oil pan off their car. Every time they went down through there. So go down there, shoot a bunch of material in it, let's patch it up. That's a twenty percent street. Eighty percent is gonna be, let's say, Burke, where they say, hey, this is, we're gonna leave this thing brick for a long time. That's where we send the, the, um, the team from Bourbon County up there. And like I said, there's, there's a way, we can use them immediately if, if we can get that program started, gathering bricks and palletizing bricks. To where there's organization to it. City of Fort Scott has, I believe, seven to nine styles of bricks. Everybody thinks a brick's a brick, but it is not. We got the thick fat Fort Scott bricks, then we got pavers. And then we got oblong ones. There is like seven to nine different styles of brick, which makes it so confusing. When you go out there to put it, you know, and again, you think it's a puzzle, but it's not, because if you ever take the time to look down a brick street and watch the lines and they'll do this. Uh, from, from curb to curb, and what's happened is that street has now shifted and now you gotta make your patch fit that shift. There's ways to do it. You can put a brick up on its side and gain some traction, you know, and sand and, so they're not gonna be perfect patches. But, but when you do that patch, it has to be done properly because it has to have concrete in the bottom of it to hold its surface, you know? So, but it's doable. I mean, there's, we've done some pretty large patches.
But like I said, I mean, just before we start doing this, obviously, I mean, I, we'll start at any time. But, uh, I just want somebody to go out, to determine what streets are non-repairable and what streets are okay. Obviously, cuz we're time-sensitive to get started this year and finish before our time for the year runs out.
And that's, here's where the confusion.
Obviously, if, if we're gonna push us off to next year, it can be determined through the winter before we start doing it. But if we're gonna start at this, I mean, I mean, somebody needs to be out there right now.
And I think what Pete was saying was that was Jesse's job.
Yeah, and, and the general consensus is that all of our brick streets were put in at the same time. And put in under the same circumstances. and put in under the same circumstances, and they have the same one inch of sand underneath them. We definitely don't have twenty-four inches of base underneath them.
Let me.
So those would all be classified as.
Let, let me ask you this, let me ask you this. What if we, um, talk to the street committee and seeing if they, cuz that, from what I remember, the street committee, there's a lot of people that have, possibly have spare time on their hands that could actually help us do this, whatever you call it, those three fancy initials.
PCI.
Yeah, PCI. They can go out and, and maybe help us make the, the, the map, let's call it, of what's what. Because Jesse's not gonna have, I can't foresee him having time trying to get projects done and, and keep everything going to be out at this point in time.
And, and that's a good plan and, and that's the reason why have, why we have the advisory committees.
Right, so let's.
And we could, we could, uh, make that work. Uh, I, I wanna make, uh, sure that the people up, uh, on, um, Burke Street are not, uh, feeling, uh, that we're, that we're insisting that that street be torn up and rebuilt. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I, I think that, that that street could be classified as a, uh, rebuildable street.
Absolutely.
And, uh, but, uh, it's at huge cost.
Pete, we just put in, that probably thousands and thousands of hours taking that concrete out and replacing the brick down through it. Probably less than ten years ago, do you recall that?
Uh, I, I wasn't here when that happened.
There was a big slopped in area.
Yeah.
It was probably four blocks.
I, I, I remember the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was done in the seventies.
Right, they just came down through here and hit it with a rake, I think was the finish they did on it. So.
Yeah, well, what, what this plan calls for, if you read it, uh, the, uh, uh, areas like Burke Street, if the, if the citizens want brick streets, then, uh, it would be the responsibility of the city to come in and, and, uh, do the base work that we're talking about. Uh, and then the citizens could, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting this, but the citizens could, uh, with eighty percent of the, uh, owners, uh, do a, a benefit district. And, uh, the work could be done and put on the tax rolls over twenty years. That would be merely the, the part that we're, we're replacing the bricks. Uh, that's an option.
Pete, do you mean by block? By block, the eighty percent, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That would need to be stipulated by block.
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda weird, because if you have Seventh Street with eighty percent, Eighth Street with not, Ninth Street, so I guess, I don't know, I mean, I understand. So essentially, you're talking about placing a fee or a tax on those people that wanna keep the brick streets?
Uh, I'm saying that's an option.
Option.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that's, you know, that, that's something that we, we, we do need to, to work on, but that is an option. And, uh.
Just, Jesse, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead. I, I thought you're.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Uh, but, so back to your point, Jesse, as, as we get ready to move forward, which, which is right now your staff to do, I'm gonna call repair work. Um, and so you don't really have the complete mapping of this that you need to move forward. And actually, this time of year to hire four more people through the winter time, I'm not sure how effectively you could use a full crew. So I'm, I'm wondering if you, if, under your current staffing, sound like we need to move forward, what you're capable of doing while this is being planned so that we don't get the cart before the horse here. Is that kinda what you're saying?
I mean, as long as everybody shows up every day, we can keep, we can do it. It's just, I mean, stuff comes up. Um, and then there's other, other events that, you know, uh, that were required or needed. My manpower's needed for, um, and things like that.
And a little, and a little more detailed planning about this would help you out to.
Yeah.
Know what the expectation for.
And, uh, the one thing I wanna keep from doing, uh, that's from what I've noticed is, there's a lot of projects that are started and they get fifty percent done, and then we move on to something else. I don't want that to happen.
Yeah, Jesse and I, uh, visited a little bit about that today, and that seems to be, um, what we've done for the past, you know, past time is get a little bit started here, get bored, move on to this area. It's not that we get bored, we just, you know, this person complains, we'll go over here, we'll, we'll keep them satisfied for a little bit, then we'll run over here. And that's hard to do. I mean, even whether it's in business or whether it's a city, you know, every, nobody wants to be half started and then not see you for another two months.
I think that's why it's important to have a dedicated team if we go forward with this that.
Absolutely.
Doesn't get pulled off.
Yeah, with a, with a real developed plan, that they say this is where we're gonna be.
Well, uh, along with this plan, and I mentioned it here, that the four people that, uh, that are, are doing this in the summertime can be, uh, rebuilding our alleys in the wintertime. Wintertime is a perfect time to do gravel alleys.
I understand, I understand that, again, like we talked about before, but there's gonna be instances where that's not. If there's a big rain and people park in their alleyways, if they're, if that's where they use to park and that's their designated park.
Right, yeah, I mean, you, you.
There are times where you work on alleys in the summer and everything, I mean, when there's.
Well, uh, here, here's the thing that you can, you can, we can do. And there is a machine that's made just for, uh, alleys, uh, a, a drag box with teeth that dr- uh, that rip up the material and then the blade in behind that lays it back in. Uh, you know, you can, you can do, uh, uh, an alley, uh, with that procedure in, in a matter of hours. We're not talking about rebuilding, uh, you know, the, the whole thing, taking out material and putting the drill back in. We're not talking about putting concrete curbs in. We're talking about a, uh.
You're just talking about box blading them?
But it's more or less like a box blade, but it's made differently and, uh, and I'll, 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 I'll send you the, uh, the, uh, video on it.
And there's, there is a couple items that I would like to, to, to bring up like that, like, I don't know about box blading them, you know, cuz we always, I always said that we needed a smaller road grader. It seems like we went out and we bought a road grader. I think back when we purchased it, we was building value merchandise or something. But we got a huge motor grader that won't fit in a lot of our alleys. It would take out, our, our alleys were built, several of them for like Model Ts. And garages are on top of each other and trees have overgrown. If we had a smaller machine with a six-way blade, we could come up and down those alleys. They build skid loader attachments, you know, we, we've got loaders, we've got all kinds of things like that and we could get more. Um, I even visited with, uh, Jason Art, he's bought a, an attachment for his, uh, tractor. And it is a cool little deal and it actually moves the gravel pretty well and puts it in the holes where it needs to be.
Yeah, well, that's what this machine, uh, this, this other machine, I, I, it, it's fairly new. Uh, but, uh, it, it's one that we could, we could definitely, uh, use for the alleys and, uh, and it.
Well, we used to have.
Just for that.
We used to have an alley program, just like the county has, you know, they're on their roads twenty-four seven. I mean, every day they're blading roads. That maintainer's in charge of twenty miles or whatever it is. And so that would be nice to get back to where we had an alley crew.
Yeah, well, again, again, this, this could be that crew, cuz there's a season.
Brad, get us some of those.
There's a season for this patching, uh, when we run out of that season, then that crew could start, uh, work on the alleys. And, and they can work all, all winter on the alleys.
Well, I think that's, it's good we're having a conversation about it, and I don't want you to feel like we're overloading you tonight, saying, hey, this is what you're gonna be doing Monday and get it fixed. But we're gonna help you through this process and, I mean, you've got a lot of learn, lot to learn as, as well as we do. Um, I think there's, you know, some of us on here that do have some knowledge on better ways to, to help out, so feel free to call us and walk you through it if, if, if we, if Mark gives us the, the go-ahead to do it.
He said no.
A what? Already?
All right, well, appreciate it. Like I said, if you have some suggestions, Jesse, by next Tuesday or something, you would, you know, would it take just, nothing, just?
And, and if you have any questions, just holler.
All right, with that, we'll call it a night.